I go to him.
All right, just ready to fill this meeting order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
All right, let's get right to our agenda tonight. Our presenting school is CFI presenting Goal Number One Benchmark 1.2.0.
Mr. Triantarak, if you'd be so kind as to join us at the podium for this evening's presentation.
No problem.
Appreciate your time being with us tonight on this snow icy day 106 of cancellation. Take it away.
First of all, thank you for having me here today. I also wanted to say a special thank you to staff members from CFI here to help me out. From LaPierre Community High School, Troy Norman and Bridget Miller. From LaPierre Homeschool Partnership, I have Janice Priesko. And from onesie twosie land, we'll talk about that later, as well as homeschool partnership and LaPierre Virtual and everything else counseling, I have Jan Carmella. And from LaPierre Virtual, I have Michelle Pfeiffer.
Nice break. Nice experience.
Thank you for having me here today. Thank you, Jared, I appreciate that. So as we go throughout the evening, we're going to be talking about the goal of 100% of our kids making it and passing their virtual classes. We're going to talk a lot about the idea of a mentor. The mentor being that teacher, that individual on the other end of the virtual course that does everything a traditional teacher would do to build that relationship and help those students be more successful. Probably talking about it, I think it's necessarily something maybe just a moment to talk about from 2014-15 until what we are now. So in 2014-15, we had four or five different curriculum providers. Every program that we offered had a different curriculum provider. We offered right around 1,800 classes and the students had quite a hundred classes to choose from. Now, in 2018, we really utilized one curriculum provider called Pearson Canaxis. This is our second year utilizing it. It allows us to offer over 500 classes with that provider and two or three other curriculum providers to kind of fill in the holes to meet the students' needs. We also went from 14-15 utilizing Embuzman to now utilizing Pearson Canaxis as our curriculum provider for LaPierre Community High School and really everything done in-house. So as I go out through the evening, it's really important to look back in terms of where we've come from and what we've done to continue to grow.
And if I could just interject, I want to look forward and know that Ken has been instrumental in negotiating with these different vendors. The virtual curriculum world is choppy seed to navigate, to say the least, because there are two primary considerations that we always have to keep an eye on. Quality of the curriculum, meaning its alignment with our curriculum and also is it rigorous enough for our students to be engaged in? And cost is also a significant factor. And so as virtual learning has become more prevalent, not just in LaPierre but across the state, the market has been flooded with a number of vendors who claim to be the next, latest, and greatest, and it's hard to navigate that, and Ken's done a great job doing it, so.
So as we talk about all these virtual classes, all these virtual options, we really look at the idea of choice. We really look at the idea of opportunity for families to make a choice. So within the virtual options that we offer, we offer classes through our homeschool partnership. Through our homeschool partnership, students that are within there, we're looking at a variety of things. But we utilize a level of mentors, community experts, to really help those students be successful. So if a family is looking for something different, whether they're a homeschool family or a traditional family looking for a different avenue, we can utilize a homeschool partnership and offer classes for these students and a variety of things through all of our curriculum options that we just talked about. We also have LaPierre Virtual. LaPierre Virtual is a standalone program that operates out of the Center for Innovation. And what that virtual programming is, is we're using that same curriculum and we're going down and using those mentors to support them. So far, we've gone through two programs, and I'm not sure how many names are up there, but the number of people that we get involved to help these students, we're really pushing and giving everything we possibly can to make them successful. You'll notice the numbers are in LaPierre Virtual. Some of those students that are considered LaPierre Virtual, they actually utilize the homeschool partnership as well. And most of them, I would say, all the K5 students and about half of the virtual members started out as a homeschool partnership family, taking one or two virtual classes, and then realizing, wow, I can handle this, this is nice. What else can I, what else can I look to go to? What else can I, can you offer me to continue to move forward? For Jan comes in huge in terms of, especially as a high school student, as these students start looking at college, they start looking at dual enrollment opportunities. The third box up there, which would be the traditional students taking one or two's classes, those are the ones you two's you guys were talking about earlier. And the pupil accounting manual that Matt kind of referenced a minute ago, it's a great read if you're ever interested. A thousand pages, and some are, if you ever want an extra copy, she'll have a copy point one for you, she does in color for you.
Don't operate any heavy machinery after reading. Unless it's a shredder.
So with that, these are our traditional students taking one or two virtual courses. As we offer more dual enrollment, as we offer more AP offerings, the schedules become very complex for students. Utilizing Pearson Canaxis allows us to take right around that 500 classes that those students can now fill in their schedule with a virtual class. So they might sit in traditional school for four hours, stay there for two remaining hours to take a virtual class to kind of supplement their schedule. And the last bullet on there is LaPierre Community High School. As we look at LaPierre Community High School, we look at a seated program at the Center for Innovation. The one big area that I want to focus on before moving on, with all of these, every student that comes here, whether they're a homeschool partnership family, whether they're a virtual, whether they're a onesie twosie, they all have their individual story. And that's really what we try to approach with. That individual story is where we try to meet that family and find that next step for them, what's going to help them to be successful. So since 2014-15, we went around 1,800 or 14 virtual classes. My number for 18-19 is a projected, the honest idea, think it might be a little low, but I just played it safe and doubled my first semester. So I had over 200, over 200 virtual classes going on in all of those programs in the first semester. So this year, we'll be right under 5,000 virtual classes. So from 14-15 to 17-18, double. You'll note it's right there, 17-18 is also when we adopted the new Pearson Canaxis. When we went out and found a quality curriculum, when we wound up in front of quality product to help these students be successful, our numbers continue to grow. Let's go back to that idea of a mentor. The idea of a mentor is that person behind the class. I've talked a lot with Michelle over the years on this topic. Michelle, in terms of what can we do to help these students? This idea of a mentor is that person that is behind the class, that person that might be there to help academically, but it's also like Danny Harden for a secondary teacher, it's there to help them socially, it's there to help them keep on track, it's there to help them, push them along the way. That is an extremely important part of the life of an education. As an elementary principal, proud of this, I realize that that idea of building a relationship is huge. Doesn't matter what research you look at, from Hattie to Danielson to Marzano, you look at the idea, without a relationship, the learning's not going to take place. Without that, without that personal relationship with that student, rather challenging when you think about it. We're going to try to build a personal relationship with a student taking a virtual course. So it's been kind of tough, but we've really pushed it and come a long way with it. As we move forward, I'd like Michelle Pfeiffer to introduce the virtual program. She's going to come on and tell a little bit about what we're doing within LaPierre Virtual to move forward to help our success of our students.
Hello. So this is probably my sixth year involved in the virtual program, and every year it's better, bigger and better. And every year we make improvements, we build upon things that work, we look at things that didn't work, and we are always trying to make it better. One of the things that Ken added was our virtual lounge. It's more of a relaxed environment, we have couches and lamps, and we want it to be a place where kids are comfortable coming in, and a lot of them suffer from social anxiety or they were bullied, so we want it to be a breath of fresh air when they walk in and be like, huh, I like this place. All right, we have snacks, we have friendly people, and just someplace where they want to be is what we try to hope for. Virtual mentors are assigned to every virtual learner, as Ken said. Every LaPierre Virtual student has my cellphone number, so I don't just mentor my group of students, I really text all of them pretty much. So, but that's nice, because then if they can't get ahold of their mentor, they have a backup person. So, the mental relationships, like Ken said, are the most important part. We try to find out what makes them tick, what their hobbies are, where they work. Oh, you work at Starbucks, here's five bucks, next time you come in, get a drink for you and me, or, you know, just whatever you can think of to get them to just build those relationships and find the connection. Because one of the things about virtual learning is it can be lonely. So they have to know that there's somebody on their side, somebody that's not going to give up on them, it has to be consistent. I know that all of my peers, we went into the education field because we love kids. So I know that every teacher builds relationships. We are, we're all doing that. But the difference is with virtual, is like I said, it's lonely for them. They have to know that somebody is there watching what they're doing, monitoring their progress. And what I've found is one of the most successful things for them is to set small goals. So yeah, they know their end date is June 14th, but if you can say to them, hey, I see you're at 15%, and you come back next Friday, I want you to be at 22%. And then you follow up with that, oh, you didn't quite make it, you're almost there, how about next week we shoot for 30%? And if you're setting those little small goals, that's what I've found over time has been the most successful thing at getting that progress to build. I was also able to teach summer school, and I just want to throw this in there also, that with summer school, it was the same thing. They need consistency, they need you to set expectations up here, because they will rise to that. And, you know, I just, I think that watching this whole program evolve over the years has been one micro history. So moving on the list there, when they come in each week, we have a little sheet where we sit down and we say, this is where you're at, this is where you need to be. So that's called an accountability report. They take it home, get a parent's signature, bring it back each week. We have monthly drawings, weekly drawings, gift cards, you like, you know, we'll do like, do you like Michigan, Michigan State, all kinds of things, just to get them fired up and want to be there. Tuesday through Thursday, we have after-school tutoring sessions, pre-tutoring in all the core subjects. That's also when they have to come in for required attendance, which that piece has been added over the years. When we first started, we didn't have any required attendance. And so then you had kids that you never saw. And we knew that we needed to fix that, so probably 2014-ish, we added a two-hour a week required attendance, which made it nice, because now we have to see them, and it brings them in more through the door, so that we can have those conversations. Are you on track? Are you, where are you at? Where do you need to be? What else are we going to say about that? And they also have to take all of their tests in the LaPierre Virtual lab, so that's another opportunity for them to come in and get to see them. 24 hours, if they text or call their mentor, we tell the mentors that, you know, 24 hours is a reasonable amount of time to get back with students. And we tell the kids that the mentors have families and lives outside of school, so to be patient, but that is another time when heavy my phone ever comes in handy, just in case they're not patient.
I don't even have your cell phone. Barry, can you, I'll put it on the website.
I think it already is. I get phone calls, yes, is this LaPierre Virtual? Yep, today it is. And then we make all parents observers, parents have their own login so that they can monitor progress. And then orientation modules are something that I developed over, during the summer when I was doing summer school. We're always working on, I don't want to talk too much, I'm trying to talk fast, but this is really important to me, the integrity of the program. So I'm always thinking about, how can we make it better? And one of the things I realized is that they need a little mini lessons on, okay, we expect them to take notes, but do they know how? So we need to teach them how if we expect them how. We teach them about, okay, plagiarism, how to avoid accidental plagiarism, paraphrasing, citing the sources, all the tools that they need as learners. We now have little modules, I think there's seven of them, that when they walked in the door, their first seven, I don't know, the first seven times that I see them, they're going to have a little module that will help them to become more successful as a virtual learner. Any questions? Thank you.
One reason why we can do that so much success is Michelle. She does an amazing job with, her constantly coming up with ideas, she wants to try something new, the modules or something new each over the summer. Allow her to get in the contact with these kids and help them move forward. Without Michelle, we wouldn't be where we are today. She's done an amazing job within the campaign here.
Well, and I also think, Ken, to agree with that, when you looked at how we first started the virtual programming, we've gone through a lot of going pains too, like just the attendance requirement, I remember our conversation about that. We had to learn how to support the virtual learning and help families understand how virtual learning is vastly different than showing up for a virtual course. And so we, you guys have gotten better at it than we first started, because you've learned a lot.
That was it, there is Michelle. Now we'll talk a little bit about our homeschool partnership.
First, I want to say thank you for just believing in Matt's vision and Ken's vision to have the homeschool partnership. I am a homeschooler by heart, I raised my kids, I've homeschooled them for 22 years, and it takes 22 years to get graduated, it's just, I've homeschooled for 22 years. So I love homeschooling and I really love students, and when Matt and Kevin Rose at the time approached me about this, we had a lot of conversations about how the partnership would look. And, you know, it started out one night, we realized we weren't doing it the best job we could, so we changed, and through the numbers, you can see that the change has been wonderful, right? And so I just can't thank you enough for your support. I feel truly blessed to be part of the program. And so we run a little differently, because we are dealing with a lot of homeschoolers, and if you know any of them, they have a mindset of their own, and they don't like to be told what to do and how to do it. And so it's a balance between making, you know, making them happy but following the rules. And so we have been able to be successful at that. And that's where the partnership comes in. We do our part and they do their part, and so, and we've been upfront and honest with that. But the partnership wouldn't be anything without the community experts and our mentors. Our mentors do the exact same thing that Michelle's mentors do over at CFI. It may look a little different, but we all follow the same standards, they all have to, all our students check in, they have to have a face-to-face once a week. And a little different on our end though, is because they're homeschoolers, right? Their students have their parents in tow, so guess what? The parents are involved. The parents are checking in as well. Where's my student at? What can I do? I don't understand how this program works. So our mentors sit down and show them, this is how. We actually also implemented, because once we realized, as the program grew, a lot of the families were struggling because they'd never been in an online program, how does this online program work? So now, every semester, we have an online training program. So the students and parents come in, we spend time with them, we're walking through how the program works, and that's just been a huge help too, because now the parents don't feel so lost and overwhelmed with these programs. So that has been a huge, our mentors, Katie Edwards and Beth Shemansky are phenomenal. They too build relationship with these kids. They know, they know their siblings, they know where they live, they know what's going on in their lives, and the kids love to come and see them and to tell them, look what I did. They bring in art projects, they bring in history projects to show their mentors. So it's just been a great, a great avenue to build that community, that's really what we're trying to build, because homeschoolers like community, I mean, everybody likes community, but over there, that's what they want to feel. They want to feel when they walk in, they're in a community, they're in a comfortable environment. And so we've been able to do that, and our mentors are phenomenal. And they, they do the same, they have the 24-hour turnaround rate, you know, if someone's texts or calls. They also have not only just their mentor's number and email address, they have mine, they have the other mentor's. So if, and so they work hand-in-hand, each mentor, oh, you can't get in? I'll help you get in, you know, so they're not waiting, right? And it's just been a great, a great avenue there. And then with the virtual lounge, we're able to send our students over first tutoring. On top of it, our mentors are, you know, tutoring on the side, helping them when they're struggling with things. The community experts are partnering with them and helping them with their things, and the Tuesday-Thursday program has really taken off with that extra support for the students to come in and meet with community experts to help them with like writing a research paper, like that's, that's a huge deal when they, you've never written one before. And sometimes those things are hard to learn online if no one else is there helping you and encouraging you. So to have those community experts come in and help and say, hey, you know, let's work on this together. Where are we at? How far did you get? You know? And so that's really a great thing. So just by opening that Tuesday-Thursday program, we brought on 50 full-time students. And so that was just this, this year. So, and that's growing, we've taken on a couple more, and so I think we're up to like 55 full-time students just in the Tuesday-Thursday program. And that is a drop-off program, so the families really enjoy that they can drop off their students and know that they're being engaged with all their online curriculum. Every, every student has online curriculum, they have the Pearson or some of the other ones to fill in the gaps, but they all have the online curriculum. And there's, the community experts are just there to help them propel farther in it and make it come a little bit more alive. Because sometimes just getting on the computer for six courses, kids get a little dull, right? So, so then, and then on Wednesday, it's not a drop-off program, so if you come over to the building on Wednesday, you better come early so you can get a parking spot, because we're out of parking spaces. And it's kind of like college, they run in and run out and run in and run out, and we have anywhere from 150 to 200 people running through that building on Wednesday.
You're not here lobbying for more space, are you? Your program, just keep it limited here.
Hear that, Mark? Hear that? So, you know, so it's really, and the parents stay on-site for that program, and so they're really engaged, they're really just loving to be able to talk to the community experts, and we're able to bring those online courses a little bit more alive, bring the hands-on component, put it in place, and just make the learning even more, the enrichment much better than just online, right? And we, we do the weekly drawings as well, we have the students trained that if you get your mentor contact done by a certain deadline, you get two tickets. If you miss that deadline, you only get one ticket. And let me tell you, those kids want those two tickets. So it works wonderfully. Our, our community, our mentors also do progress reports, they do for a semester, and if anyone is failing, the parents must sign knowing that they know their student is failing, so that they can't come back and say, well, no one ever told them. Because, you know, I'm sure you don't ever have parents say that, but we do. We have parent meetings for several different reasons. We have the training, like we talked about, we have Ken come over and he meets with the parents, and we talk about, you know, what, what they'd like to see changed in the program, what they'd like to see us add to the program. And then, you know, throughout the year, we just touch base with the families and try and really listen to what, what their needs are and what they're looking for, because we know that if we don't have something they want, they'll go somewhere else. So we're always listening to hear what, what's the next thing they would like. And, and, you know, Matt and Kevin have been great to hear, and unfortunately, sometimes they have to say no, but they have said yes to a lot of things, and that's why the program works really well. And we just, you know, I can't just say enough about thank you for having this program, because I, my daughter got to spend two years in it, and at that time, we didn't even offer dual enrollment. So, no, the last year she did, because she got to enroll through dual enrollment. But boy, and now we see students so interested in the early college, we have several of our students that have turned full-time to do the early college. And, I mean, that's a huge, that's a huge deal for families at home, you know, that want, as a homeschool families, are looking to send their kid on, but yet have that financial opportunity. So, and we can see many students, and we're seeing it both ways. We see families from traditional making a move, but we're also seeing homeschool families make a move into traditional. And I really think that's the success, right? That in years past, Matt, you'll, you'll, you'll back me up on this, homeschoolers didn't want anything to do with the public school. Not a, zero, zilch, forget it. I was one of them. I was at one of your first meetings for the virtual program you were going to run out at.
You were a heckler. You heckled me at first.
And I, I didn't know, I just asked some questions, I just asked some questions, and I said I didn't want anything to do with that, and, hi.
That's how I accept you, Michelle. You said, show me how to do it better, I need you to run it.
I know, so, but, and we have a completely different model than what you started out with.
Yes, we do.
So, yeah.
Time's up!
So anyway, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You know, it is, it is a great story. I remember that our first meeting, you know, we talked about our vision, and we thought about modeling some existing homeschool partnership programs. We did a lot of visits, we had some folks come in, and, you know, to Michelle's credit, and Ken, after taking over leadership of our innovative programs, have come to me on numerous occasions to say, the way we designed it is not working, you've got to shift gears. It's very timely that CFI is presenting today, because we'll talk about some of the enrollment members district-wide, and you will see the impact of homeschool partnership in the virtual program on our district enrollment. It is nothing short of remarkable. When we started out, how many kids did we have in the first year?
I, you know, I was trying to think of that, and I need to go back, but I thought like in the very first semester, we had like nine students.
Yes, and less than NFT, so five or six FTE.
Right, yeah. If you had come in 8.76 FTE in the first year.
Right.
Kind of like, okay, and then the next year we had 20, 25, 30, and 40, and now...
Well, the second semester, we went to 24, and then the next semester, we went to 50, the next semester, we went to 75, and now we were, the students running through, not the FTE, but the students running through, we're running 198 students through the building.
And Michelle has had to, this has been a, been a battle. This is a battle, this is a, this is a community that is, that is, that has very high expectations, but they also, what we are learning in 2019, they are consumers of education, meaning if they are not satisfied customers, they are gone. And so you, we have to serve them and service them in a way, because it can be a transient population, and Michelle's right, we've had to, you know, make accommodations without compromising what our standards are, which can be a difficult conversation. I have spoken to this group on a number of occasions, recently was welcomed by Michelle to speak to a number of parents about our strategic plan. They, when we first started out, it was kind of like, okay, we'll, we'll do this deal with you guys, dip our toe in the cold pool, see how it works out, but we're not going to have to move here schools. We'll take the free school, take online courses. We, I actually had a mom ask me, so, Matt, do you honestly believe the strategic plan is going to directly benefit programs like the homeschool partnership? Right? And I said, absolutely, I gave a number of reasons. One, as, as we grow and, and improve and operate more efficiently, it means more resources for all of our program, which includes you. And now we've got to give the homeschool parents who are motivated to see our district be successful, whether it be in the strategic planning process or a bond or whatever, that's a demographic of people that has not traditionally supported, not just public education, but formal education in general, and here we are now, a whole army of people who want to see us be successful, because they in turn are going to benefit from that success. I was blown away by that meeting, walking away, just because I didn't anticipate that. And it's because of Michelle and Ken and the support that we have here that are constantly trying to meet their needs to service them, and now we're talking about hundreds of kids. And we talked, I know we talked very intentionally about growing the program organically. We saw a couple other homeschool partnerships in Michigan that had three, four, and 500 kids, they're making all this money, and then we learned that there was a lot of shortcuts taken, and there were things that maybe weren't on the up and up, and we didn't want our program to be like that, we wanted to be a natural growth, but they have always kept an eye on quality curriculum as the centerpiece of it, and that's why. And good people are coming to us now and staying. And you're right, I love the fact that we have a transience between, it's a two-way street. Some of our kids and families think that this model is better for them, that's great, we, we can guide them. Other folks get in, they say, you know what? Traditional schooling isn't that bad, I want to increase the level of classes I take from LCS. And we always said, that wasn't our intention. We weren't trying to change anybody's mind, we just wanted to provide a program, we're not going to try to get you in with one class and then convince you and change the rules and get you to come over. Now we'll have people call and say, I want to, I want to homeschool my kid, I'm pulling him up, not happy. Oh, you know, call Michelle. Oh, you know, call Michonne.
And they do.
And they do.
It's a great point. It's one of the ideas behind all of our programs. It's not, we're not trying to take a traditional student, trying to give a choice. So years before, if a student said, "I want to do virtual," they left us. Years before, if they said, "I want to do ver, if I want to do homeschool," they would leave us. They would leave our school system and they would go somewhere else. Now, with our stuff, what they say, we can offer it.
I like the fact that they're invited to log during commencement. A family member in the program, she's very excited that she's, she lives in Emily City, but she's coming here. And she asked me, "Are you going to give me my diploma?" And I'm like, "Absolutely, I'm going to give you your diploma." So I think that's making her feel more, you know, part of, part of the school, or even though she's homeschooled.
That's very interesting.
Obviously, Michonne can say no. Actually, I have to say no sometimes about things, but we're going to have you in terms of, we continue to grow. I'd like to have Richard and Ron come up and talk briefly about the Pierce Community High School. Richard's telling us the secret. She's new to the program too.
So I could actually talk for a very long time at home. I'm going to try to be very quick, but open it up right now. If you've got any questions, go to slow down and expand on everything, just because there's so much more to do. You know, there's mentors through everything, we're using Pearson as well. Our mentors are responsible for weekly meetings with every individual kid. They're our first contact for any issue, whether it's academic or otherwise, you know, it's all sort of events, obviously we have otherwise. The mentors do their parent teacher conferences. They are, most of our mentors are the teachers that are doing small group instruction, which some of the stuff that's taken a lot of time, we're taking, like, yesterday I took upper 2A kids out and we did a project. That was a little harder to do online, so we did it face-to-face. And then they're responsible for like data binder support. Our data binders, each kid has one, and they have a ton of stuff in them that we think everything in there is important for their success. There's weekly progress, graduation plans, transcripts, calendar, their weekly attendance, students' personal goals, and their red, yellow, green placement, which I'll give it to them in just a second. But those are all in the binders, every kid has their own. And, you know, if you have any questions on those, just those types of stuff. The rooms, room assignments, green, yellow, red, like a stoplight. Students doing well, they're in the green room. We're pretty much saying, what can we do to get out of your way? You're doing well. We're going to be there to help you, we're going to support you, but we're not going to be there to, to hinder what you're doing. Right, yellow, more of a transition. You know, students are starting to do better. We're going to be up less in their way, right, but we're still going to give them the support they need. Red, you're not even done. So we're going to climb down on you as hard as we can to make it as uncomfortable as possible until you're successful and, and can move up to yellow and hopefully get a little bit. And it's, you know, straightforward as we can be about it. We look at three things when we're doing that. Economics, attendance, and behavior. Right? So if you keep your classes done, if you're there and you're not swearing at anybody or punching anybody or whatever, then we're staying on your way.
Are we talking about Ken or the students?
We're, we're trying, we're trying, but that hasn't happened yet. As far as the drop-off prevention role, that's Mrs. Norris', role. So we're going to invite her to expand on that.
I have been in the role since January 3rd. I've been there a total of 12 days. And hoping that's wrong by 13.
Can you see some data on your progress?
You know, actually, we already had a meeting with State and Me. So, we are there and collecting, we're, I mean, collecting data. We have behavior meetings, academic meetings, goal-setting meetings, parent contacts. Our two three forms where everybody's meeting with small groups. All the stats collected, we're analyzing it to see trends. And I also collaborate with teachers, drive instruction, and formulate plans for student success. Ken told me when I went in there, because obviously it's the alternative program, which I actually am loving, but Ken said, you know, just step back, step back for a couple weeks and watch what goes on. And I think that observation, there's a lot of change that's come out of the observation. And the teachers have been phenomenal with implementing change as well. We, currently, I am the second mentor to seniors. In the red room, the seniors, I meet with them two or three times per week on top of what the other mentors are. And if they're in the yellow room, I meet with them one or two times per week. The green room. The green room at least once a week. Our documentation, what we want to show with that is an increase in finishing credits. The number in the red, yellow, and green room, weekly, the percentage we're hoping goes up into the green room and last in the red room. We are also looking at personal goals for their credits being met. Our overall goal is 100% earns, earns seven credits or at least meet their personal goal. Right now, we're working on creating perception data survey for students, for parents, for staff about the small groups and the alternative ed programs. We're also going to do a book study. We're measuring data for students who get small group interventions versus those who don't and see what happens with that. I'm there to support our staff to better support students through time management, coaching, observing, modeling, data collection. A big thing I really want to do though is, I really want to be on the side of the kids. So that they have someone, they have an adult who believes in them every day. And I'm their cheerleader, I'm the one telling them, "Yes, you can do that, we all do it." But they have a second person now who can do that. And get them looking at their future. Another thing we've implemented is, which I love, is my favorite thing to do. The positive proactive calls home. I can't tell you how much impact that's had on kids. I had a, I actually had a kid like pick me up in the hallway and hug me and say, "My dad's never had a positive call home." And it was just, there's so many things, just in my 12 days there, that I've learned and I want to do. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be there because it's exciting.
Here's looking at the next 12 days.
I'm hoping.
After 20, I can't.
So how did it go when you called the parent? Like, how did it go?
Oh, it was so fun. I, well, I called the mom and I left a message on the mom's phone. And then I called the dad and it was the funniest thing because they said, "Hello?" And I told him who I was and I told him, "You know, your son, you know, he, he made 50% growth today. He was working hard and I was so proud of him." And it, by the end, both of us, dad and I were both laughing on the phone. And then I went and told the son. Well, the son immediately called his dad and he's jumping up down the hallway, picks me up. And then the mom actually called the next day and left a message and said, "I appreciate it if she wasn't called or anything." So, but he's been doing a lot better. He does, and so it's fun to do, so.
That's great.
That was a high school kid I have to check in on now.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. My kid will.
Yeah. I'm actually calling a little counseling and I want you to do these.
Okay. Well, I have a few bullet points and I really promise to be sure, you know, it's not as easy as it seems. I'm really here for the ones and twos to talk from, as a counseling department. The four of us obviously talk to the students and work with them in selecting their courses for each semester. And when it appears that it is a good fit for them, or they ask about it, or sometimes we realize that what's in their best interest is perhaps to try an online class. We have the opportunity then to kind of counsel them, to encourage them to tend in a positive way or maybe kind of even at times to deter them. Because we want to make sure that students understand that there's a commitment involved. Okay? And so we think we, we do a pretty good job, as high school, just like the other things that we do for virtual, of getting students to understand the commitment that's involved. So the students have some other advantages in being in the building, taking the ones and twos. Because the students are there every day. They have the first hour or sixth hour, whatever hour it is. So they have the opportunity to actually talk to their mentor or see their mentor every day. I know the students that I have, I have them signed on a clipboard so that they have the chance, I have the chance as well, to see them when they come by. Now, I don't always get a chance to talk to them every day, but it gives us an opportunity. And I know the other teachers do the same thing. Support for the students. If I have a student that I'm mentoring and he has or she has a particular question that I don't feel content-wise, I can accurately answer, I can ask my colleagues, I can send the student to a colleague. If they're really struggling in a subject, they can go to the virtual lounge and they can get through there. And so this provides us with, I would say, even though they're in the building doing it, we can still utilize all of the other resources. The student has access to it. On the last, I have about a year, has it been about a year, maybe a little bit more? We have, actually, as the mentors ourselves, we have gotten some training. Because the people accounting piece is important, making sure that we're accurate in how we are mentoring them and actually supporting them in the best way possible. That's going to help, I think. Not just for the conversation piece of it, but also for the grading piece of things. We need to track them and make sure that we're doing it correctly in power school and how are we monitoring them or utilizing the Pearson Canaxis as a product. Lastly, we've realized definitely, like the other partners, we have to actually make sure the students know how to access their online class. And so we have, Michelle comes over and she does a training at least once each semester, at the beginning of the semester now, so that the students actually have a chance to be told exactly, shown. And I can tell you, in the past, I would have students come in and say, "Okay, let me show you how to log in then." And so my kids or any kids, once people realize that we know how to do it, they would send them down. The teachers would say, "You need to go down and see the counselor office because they can show you how to do this." And now instead, me and Michelle, who actually gives them the training, so that the students have a much greater confidence versus coming in and sitting in the room for five minutes. There are a couple other things though, Ken. I just want to make sure that I also say that as part as, because.
Birthday today.
I've got the chance to be part of all of the.
Birthday today?
Today is exactly my birthday.
Wait a second. I couldn't think of a better gift than having you present with a school board.
But Michelle and I, Michelle and I.
That's the only thing better than 12 days on the job.
We started with the virtual piece of things. And I remember when Ron Williams here calling Ron and saying, "You know, Ron, I think if we're going to do this, we need to have somebody who is specifically, as a counselor, who specifically is talking with the families and the kids versus all eight or 10 of us talking individually." And so to see the growth and the changes and then to get to be part of the homeschool partnership, I need to know, to know that there are so many more contacts that I get to have with the homeschool partnership parents. When we started, I was there a couple of times a semester, maybe three or four times in a year or something. But now, they'll come over to the high school, they don't have any issue contacting me. When I go over there, people are more welcome, they're very welcoming, they have really good questions. And I have three homeschool partnership students that are part of the whole college program. And when I met with the last one over at the partnership, the bulk of the parents were like, "I just wish we would have had this for our other kids. I just wish we would have." And so, like you said, Matt, I really, I feel so strongly that we weren't trying to create a partnership so we could like lure them in. But what I have loved is being part of, watching them understand that as public school, we provide some opportunities that they could utilize. They can utilize what works for them and then change their minds or, so the programs are growing because we have great people.
Just can't imagine what Jan goes through every year to, every semester, to classes in for the virtual and homeschool program. That's an absolutely amazing job because like the people coming in, you know, says, they're off the lineup from classes of power schools, recent Canaxis, so there's no easy way to do this. I couldn't do that without Jan making sure you got the triple check-in. So thank you so much for all the effort. Can I go back to our slide in the beginning, just their share numbers? Our growth, our growth has come from all decisions we make. Our growth has come from using everything we talked about here, plus probably 450 more days. This is just a small touch of what we've done in terms of helping these kids. Now, all that being said, we've grown from 3,066 to probably, I'm going to have to say over 45,000 hopefully by the end of this year. With that being said, our data is starting to show some trends and it's, it's good. You showed like you talked earlier that in 1415, we did not have attendance requirements. You can see, as a result of it, we did not have success with our program. You can see that even with going from 1415 all the way to 2017, 18, we've over-doubled our, our students and our classes in terms of what we do and we're continuing to grow. Yes, is it where I wanted to be? No. But it's also a brand new game. This is also a brand new situation where we're trying to impact more and more students. My goal is that we continue to move forward. My goal is that we put things in the place to build those relationships, help those students. That number there, 72% successful with passing their course, includes community high school. We're not separating the numbers, that's everyone. And that could be a high school junior that moves in from another district with two credits in their entire high school career. So we, that's all of our students and our goal is to continue moving them forward.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, but I just want to say, I thank every one of you for all of your passion for these students. I mean, what you've shared tonight is absolutely amazing, the continuous improvement you've done to these programs to strengthen them for these students. Fantastic. I mean, thank you very much.
It's a great comment, Matt. You can see it.
Yeah, you can see the glow and, you know, just even in your data, it's impressive.
Anybody else have any questions, please?
I think this is a good time. I was there last week, I don't know, one of the days you've been open and brought.
What a rich case.
It might have been Friday. Yeah.
That's virtual days, not actual days.
Friday. Anyways, it brought donations for Catherine Decoe's, Decoo, what, I don't know how to say it. Her, she has a Narnia Plaza is what they call it. And I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but it's basically like a clothes and hygiene products and food for all these students. And I was just awed by just that alone, that, you know, these students, they couch surf, there's, you know, there's things that, that they don't have. And one of the kids helped bring it in, it was, he was so cute. I had got some deodorant from Sam's, it was, you know, a good deal. He said, "That's the good stuff, I need one of those." And I was like, wow, you know, it was just really cool to see their excitement too because of, you know, what's being provided for them. So I encourage you, if you have like clothes or anything, like I just think it's a great moment.
What's the name of the plaza?
I think she calls it Narnia.
There's one at the high school too. There's one at the high school too.
Children of the Gabsers.
Yeah, I was going to say, he probably knows.
Yeah, there's, there's the Angel Plaza over at the virtual high school. Ken and I got there today, we need something at this school. It can be a part of that, it can be not, I don't care. She had the ability to work on this. I went to her and said, "Hey, can you do this for us?" And she goes, "How?" I go, "I don't care." And she said, "What should I do?" I said, "Whatever you want." Then she said, "Well, well, I need a space." And we, and we started to give her a closet and it was tiny. And she filled that in like three days. And then Ken found her a room and she filled that in another week and a half or so. You know, and I've, I've seen things on Facebook, I've seen, you know, comments about it, that she's done a really great job. Another thing that's happened, which is really cool, we had a specific need for a kid that we didn't have the stuff and we didn't have the cash. And someone had found out about it and came in and donated change, that their family collects change and they donated it to the office for the club. No idea what was in it. She wasn't in it at that time. She came in, they gave her it, shoveling it up, and there was like 100 bucks in cash plus more change. And so she was able to meet things that we didn't have. And, you know, we had clothing, we had deodorant, right? But, you know, that's just community doing stuff. And she's done an incredible job. She stopped coming to us and asking us how to do stuff because she's just doing it and she's doing a great job.
Are the two plazas working together? Like with.
They're happy.
If we need something, I'll, 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 I'll school, I'll school leave something or if it's a high school student.
She just has, I mean, she's doing like the folding of the clothes and stuff all on her own. Like she's collecting her volunteers for Friday night at 6:30 because she needs help.
And she needs food right now.
Yeah, just saying, food is a big one. I just went and got Rotten Goals and Macaroni and Cheese.
We tried, we tried to send all the students, so we tried to send them back home. Especially older women.
She's taking the Rotten Goals.
Or if we know what happens.
Anyways, it's awesome.
Yeah, we agree, these programs are awesome for, the goal is not to lose kids and get them through community or whatever programs so that they feel empowered and better about themselves. The homeschool partnership, that's awesome too.
Well, if you look at hierarchy of needs, let's face it, if you don't have food and shelter and all that, they can't learn. So, by providing all, I just don't think it's like this, it's really, really awesome.
Just to echo what Sarah had said, you know, you talk about all the time, Mr. Superintendent, that the health of the district is a stack. And you're bringing, you know, the staff members that you've got there, the exception of Troy, you're doing a good job. But no, my only point to take is that Troy doesn't coach anymore and we need to get him back.
You got it.
I'll be honest, when my kids are out for college, I probably will be coaching. But right now, my focus is my own kids and nurses.
But all kidding aside, thank you to all of you for the work that you do. So, thank you.
It's funny, Jan mentioned Ron Reed when we first started talking about the merger of the high schools and taking a look at the West Side, you know, what are we going to do with this old high school? You know, in two months, it's going to be a big building, 160,000 square feet. And we sat down in the office, we came up with this idea, what about an incubation center or research and development? You know, weighing in. Ron said, what about an innovation center? And I said, well, what goes in that? He goes, I don't know. I don't know what figured out. We had the name of the building and we just knew that, but the brick and mortar didn't create it. Right? You put great people in there and you look at, I can't tell you how proud I am personally to have been on the front end of that and really didn't do a lot more than just come up with the name and put people in place that have developed these programs. But what wasn't mentioned is the amount of community outreach that's done and things that are made available at no cost to people like our senior walking program. We have a church charity program in there that, you know, houses goods that are distributed to the community. Third Degree Burns has space in there, robotics programs have been able to grow and flourish as a result of the space. Our testing center, just that space has been so critically important to growing programs. And, yeah, we talk about, you know, the building isn't the greatest, it isn't in the best shape, but we wouldn't be able to do a lot of what we do without that space. So, from a strategic plan perspective and connecting the dots, we have to keep a really keen eye as a board and a leadership team. We're not just going to knock that building down, build this great high school and then what happens to all these programs? They have to have a home, they've got to find a place to be, especially everything you heard tonight in addition to these community programs. And we have plans for that, right? It won't be a vast former Class A high school, right? But there's got to be spots for that because without the space, it doesn't grow.
So, I have a question, is, was Ron Reed?
So, Ron is, he was Michelle's position.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, a number of years ago.
Well, how much is irrelevant there?
For two years, he was our curriculum director. And at the time, we had two, we had a K-5 curriculum director, Heather Vance, who was a former Mayfield principal. She's retired since then. Ron is also retired, he didn't run education anymore, but he was the sixth full curriculum director.
Denise, I think you wanted to say something.
Thank you. When we started virtual, I remember going out to our grove and seeing that new program and how different it is now than when we went out there and, you know, viewed everything that was going on. It was a little, there wasn't a lot. And so, it has grown, it's awesome to see how much this is getting used. And I'm really happy about the homeschool program because I remember when we got here, learning about this whole contingent of people, you know, that homeschool and just wished that there was some way that we could do something, you know, with that. So, I mean, it's just awesome.
Ken, I just want to say thanks to you and everyone here tonight because I hear somewhere, it's for us, sitting here looking at you, I mean, we're studying everything that you guys are doing and saying and how you're doing it. I hear, and I've said this for years, what I hear, I'll think you guys are doing, I think, exhaustion. And you guys are still here after all these years, passionate about what you do. And this reinforces for us that we have the right people doing the right job for our kids. So, congratulations to everybody, thank you so much. My question is, can we have Michelle's seven modules extended to everybody else? Why wouldn't we just restrict it to your kids?
Like, when Jan mentioned that I go to the high school and give the orientations, I cram in those modules. They heard me talk about plagiarism and all that stuff, they're shortened, but they're getting all the same information. And then, just so you know, my future goal, when I get some extra time, is to put them all on video so that I don't have to have this dog and pony show over and over and over. And then, everyone can see these modules.
So, Michelle wants more parking, you want more time. Anybody else have any?
Yes, Bridgette wants
I could add to mine.
Bridgette wants 12 more.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thanks.
All right, next is time for public comment, but I still have a public comment card, so we'll move right on to reports. So, first off is teaching, learning and technology. Before you do that, if you guys want to leave, feel free.
I could go. I have dinner with my husband.
You should. But, Miss Bebatty, I believe you were going to need to look for it.
Yes, Teaching, Learning and Technology Committee met on January 24th at Sunday. So, I guess that there's Ms. Putnam, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mike's already present. Superintendent Andre updated us on a strategic plan, which since I last heard it, had been updated that administration would be staying in this building. And the peer community, hi, is there a virtual, that's a support group right now? That's part of it. So, that I was supportive of. And then, we were presented with a field trip that Roland Warner and Summer Student Council want to go to the week of May 20th through the 23rd. And looking at the calendar, I admit, I was concerned that the kids would be out of academics for four days to go on the trip and not be in school for a week with the Fridays before Memorial Day. And so, we did approve the trip with the requirement that the students and the chaperones, teachers present this trip to us at the June meeting. So, it's just, it's certainly not these days, these kids are just in the So, that is my report. Anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? No questions, all right, thank you. Moving on was the Personnel Committee, you talked about having fun and a good day. Ms. Putnam followed one meeting right by another. So, she moved right out of Teaching, Learning and Technology right into Personnel Committee meeting with me. We met with Matt, Kim, Mark and Mark Meisner. And we also talked about the strategic plan update and we'll continue to hear more about that as we go on. Great session, we talked about like the theme of meeting, something that worked and we continue to improve the process. So, we really appreciated that. And the second major agenda item was the superintendent evaluation process. And Ken gave us a good overview and reminder of where we are and why we are where we are and a reminder also that we continue to use the MASP evaluation tool. One of the tools that was given to us by the state as an appropriate tool for evaluating management performance. And the areas are governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, instructional leadership, instructional leadership, student growth and progress toward district-wide goals. And with particular emphasis on instruction or on student growth and progress. So, we'll go into closed session at our March 6th meeting for further discussion and review of the superintendent. That's about it. Any questions? All right, next we'll move on to Finance and Operations Committee.
And so, we met on Friday, February 1st at 3:30, myself, Nate and Brad, along with Matt, Mark Rader and Mark Meisner. And we discussed the strategic plan and how it will be presented at the February 20th special board meeting. And it will be put on the March 6th board meeting for
Congratulations to Mrs. Miller. Next up on our agenda is presentations and the first one is budget development, district enrollment.
Yes, at this time, as part of our overall budget process, the board members will recall that we have a series of presentations throughout the process to update you, eventually leading us to a balanced budget adoption in June. The first of which is a presentation that centers primarily around enrollment and the updated figures. But Mark will, Mark and Kim and I will also share some information relative to the budget development process in general and the variables that we consider as we work for the next several months to ultimately adopt a balanced budget at the last meeting in June. So, Mr. Rader?
Thank you. So, part of this presentation for returning board members, you'll see, it's information repeated for new members. It's our process of sharing the information because what we're trying to do is much more transparent, not what Hope just does, but what happens in Lansing, in DC, and everything that impacts us that eventually I come here and report. The good news is, I don't have a lot of numbers tonight because nothing's happened up in Lansing. The bad news is, nothing's happened in Lansing. So, a couple of them, I won't read every one of the bullets in the slide. You've got none in the board packet, but, you know, we start here in this January, February with a number of processes that go on. One scheduling, probably instead of this, is go to this slide, which really is our guideline to guide us at the top of board meetings. So, scheduling the board meetings, the presentation, February 6th there. March 6th will hopefully be the one where we actually have some information numerically that we can start to quantify and see how, what it means to our bottom line and what kind of planning we've got to do for the 1920 budget calendar. You see in the middle, leadership activities, then you see the budget development, so that's the budget managers in the red. First one, last year, we started in February, this year, we will start in March. And we've got three scheduled, if needed. We typically have been doing two, sometimes we've done three since I've been here. And onward down. So, this is kind of our roadmap guide that allows us to plan consistently and make sure we fill all the groups that we need to communicate.
Can I stop you for a second? I don't know what you guys, this is the second time I've seen this format here recently. I really like this. I love this sort of process that it lands, so keep it up.
Kim gets credit, Kim's the one who thinks that, for a process, so we give Kim credit for that because we developed that from a number of processes over the last year.
Kim drops us down in a meeting and tells me some type of December
What is this, this is light blue, this is just really kind of a week?
He led us through developments.
He, oh, okay.
So, basically, Jan
That's Lansing.
Yeah, all it is is, I like
I just couldn't read it.
The snapshot of it, Lance, just looking at all the different things from January to June that are happening simultaneously and kind of when those things are going to actually happen.
I agree with you. This is a nice gold chart. It's all on one page.
So, just to go back to the first slide, so really, where we're kind of stuck is the fourth bullet because Governor was supposed to do her State and State address last night, fifth. She postponed it and the President moved his to the fifth. So, hers is now the 12th. So, just like we got very little information from the federal level last night. And are we concerned? Yes. Why? There's still no federal budget. So, what's that going to do to us? Well, we get $3 to $4 million in grants, IDA, all that flows through the state. So, we keep a watch on that. Do we think it's going away? No. But who knows where the money is shifted in the pot. So, fast forward to this one, primary budget variance. Because that's really what we try to focus on as a team, is figure out what are the things that we can quantify? What are the unknowns and what's the variable in that unknown? So, there was the advocacy study. I didn't get it from Jared, so what's going on there? It moved by itself.
Oh, that was probably
Okay, it was Advocacy study was, the study was statewide. ISD businesses, a good cross-segment, saying basically, school funding at the current rate is well underfunded. We should have close to $10,000 per student funding in order to accomplish what you put, especially these students and other elements, vocational technical, there should be even more money. Nothing's happened with that except the new Governor has put merit to it, saying she thinks we need to change the current funding model for schools. But we don't know what that means yet. So, we're waiting to see where that goes. We have new legislature, both House and Senate. So, this is like the new start after eight years. I mentioned Mike coming in. It's good, but it's bad. We already know a Governor has stated, you probably won't see a budget adopted for a general fund or a schooling fund by June 1st like we've seen for the last eight years. For those of us that have been around for a while, I'm not looking for a go back to days that we don't find out what our budget is until September, two months into our fiscal year. Because we have to do a lot of guessing and guessing on the conservative, which is not good for anyone because then when the numbers don't come in, or they come in better, we look like we overcut, we overhedge and no one wins that. So, we're hoping to push legislatively that they still see the priority, get this done early enough so we know where our funding is.
Or the mid-year cost.
Has she given you any indication?
Nope.
What she's thinking as far as her idea that'll find schools?
Roads are priority.
Right.
School funding's a priority. But that's a statement, there's no details.
Right, oh, yeah.
And I'll have some more later on to add for some elements. The other big unknown for us is Brian Winston's passing, State Superintendent, still vacant. Yes, it's been filled with a current member in cabinet up there, but that position's posted and there will be filled here in the near future. There's uncertainty to that. Yes, it's supposed to be politically neutral, but we know it's not. And we don't know what that will bring with the change in direction. Will it continue with Brian's vision of us being a top 10 state within 10 years? Or will it change from that vision? And that has implications to us from funding because of where the money flows from state aid. Next one we know, student enrollment, still based on that. Governor Whitmer hasn't indicated she wants to change that, but she wants to change maybe the dollar amounts or do differential. Where we saw the last administration put the additional category of $25 for a high school student on top of the base foundation, we've heard hints that could be bigger. The bad side of that is, we may have to $71, $71 for an elementary kid because they made a shift and say, oh, you only need $5,000 for elementary and we'll give you $10,000 for a high school. It's still the same pot of money. So, we are concerned with that. Those last two bullets, we could talk for days and hours. It is so volatile, but that impacts both the global, the national economy, Russia, China, the Middle East, oil, et cetera. And it's showing up more and more. We see that stock market go up and down like the ocean. What does that mean to us? Well, if you go in March, you start talking about the retirement fund and the unfunded liability for our retirement system, that would perhaps cost us, Kenny. So, that's where the impact, when I say those things are impactful and they're variables, they are. We just can't ever quantify what they are. Basic information here, students allowance, the principal allowance is the majority of our annual revenue. Example, the $5,000, the current for fiscal, 18, $19,000, $7,871 per student. And then, on the right hand side, our major categories of the biggest impact, the auto-wise for our budget, starting with the salaries, the related health benefits, state retirement, and then our buses, catwalk, everything total cost. More budget variables on the revenue side. So, we don't know where we're going to be for foundation loans. So, some history, when we get this year, we had $240, largest increase in tenure period. Do we think that can be repeated next year? No. Do we know from the state's balance sheet, is there enough money? Well, there's kind of. There's about $200 per student if they use their dollar available in the revenues for the schooling for 1920 and put up the foundation loans. That probability is not likely, the vaults can go there. So, it's better than zero, but it's probably not as good as we saw this year. The problem here comes in 2021. The amount of money that is projected, there's not enough to even cover the MIPSIR liability at that point in time. So, if they use all the money, we're eating zero in foundation loans, based on what we told them a month ago. There's a lot of moving parts to that at this point in time. So, am I worried? Yes. Do I put that much credibility over eating zero in 2021? No. But there's a probability if all those things in the previous stage come to be negative in a way in the way of the economy and stuff. Does the state have the high school, $25 for a high school, additional categorical still in there? Will they continue with the new school aid, with the new legislature or Governor? No. The element on the non-public and homeschool, Ken was talking earlier, so the max of what we can get, they've been trying to loop that. So, we've preserved it as an education entity, not us, but everyone in the state, where it's .75.
So, what, that is hugely problematic and political. When we, when we followed Governor Snyder's directive several years ago, when he said any place, anywhere, anytime for education for students, whether it's virtual, it's homeschool partnership, it was really trying to incentivize districts to do exactly what the period, go out and find alternative sources of revenue, whether it's through school of choice or just basically competing against your public school peers, saying, you've got a better product, come to us and you'd be rewarded. The legislature has continually put forward the last number of budget cycles and successfully capped the amount of money that we can recruit for that. So, our revenue, you know, we've got to hire more staff, more homeschool partnership kids we have, it's more technology, it's more staff, it's more mentors, it's more community experts. The more virtual students we have, it's more computers, more mentors, more support, more curriculum costs, and they want, and they're capping that revenue. So, we can't get a full one FTE, we're only getting 75% of it, while our expenditures, our costs don't go down commensurately. That's, that's a huge problem. We've, we've seen recommendations to put it at 50%. It's not, not, not good. We're doing the work, we were responding to what you asked us to do, we're providing a service to a greater number of non-traditional students, we deserve to get the revenue for them.
So, there's a cost.
There's a cost, I mean, that's right. If you want, you heard the service, you heard the service, those students are getting time.
So, do you have a kind of presentation with Senator Daley or Representative Howell?
Uh, Mr. Howell and I have talked about this. I believe the last time around, he voted no on this. He supports us, he understands it. He's hugely supportive. Mr. Daley and I have yet to talk about the issue. Still getting his feet wet in there, but.
Voice, maybe in their view.
Absolutely, absolutely. But, but quite frankly, Representative Howell has been accessible and supportive on a lot of education issues, and, and sometimes, in contrast, is talking solid.
Rest is, on there more is a reminder, it's the unknowns. To change the grant, we're always worthy to change the rules for the grant, how we can spend the dollars, how we can use the dollars, and then that focus in the middle, I haven't read, what categoricals, categoricals, so those are everything beyond the base foundation, 31A and stuff, that there's a chess game always moving money around, and we're always concerned. And then the CP is really the early mode of college, but it's also talk that they may take more money out of the school aid fund to put to community colleges. We already have $800 million that comes out of the school aid fund. One of our contentious points to the legislature is, listen, we could get almost $600 more across the state, every 1.4 million students that's in the public education system, we can get $600 more for students. So, we go from $7,800 to $8,400 a student. What would that do to us folks? It would change major our pairs out in here in this district and everyone else in the state. That money is going every year. That's not one time, that's 890 a year that's going to colleges that the general fund of state used to pay, but they've come to the school aid fund as the general fund has been short revenue.
Yeah, I read an article in late 2018, 4.5 billion.
There you go.
Oh, that's a lot.
It's more than a lot. So, now on to the enrollment. So, this Stanford consultants did five years ago in 2015, a projection for us. We, again, went to them in the fall of this year, they came to refresh that, but we didn't have the October count. So, this is without the October count, but we know that what's happening is the softening of those lines. So, if you remember, that line was a lot steeper left to right originally, and so it's, it's getting better. That's not a phenomenon we're not necessarily not aware of, because we do, the birth rates haven't changed, but we also know our senior class and the kindergartners are getting closer. So, it's softening, it's flattening out for us. So, that's good news. That's, our projections are a little bit better than what we thought two, three years ago. Now, here's the real numbers. So, now you plot in the far right-hand side, the unhated count for this school year, and you're at 4989. And you see right below it, a year ago, October, we're at 4949. Move it on one more line, and you see not a minus, but a positive, 39. So, now what we've done is we bucked the trend of our 170 on average declining enrollment, and we've got this blip, which is a good blip, that's a positive number. Now, I'm going to turn to Matt mentioned earlier, under Ken's, but I want him to continue on.
So, the big question is, why? How did this happen when you look at the previous six years, minus 176 students, down 255, down 170, down 182, down 150, down 183? We build into our projections annually about 170 students, not reasons that we did this year, which you can tell is a pretty accurate figure from the last six budgeting cycles. So, when we got the unhated numbers this year, and we're up all the way to FTE, that's a pretty significant swing from budgeting for down 170. So, we have been drilling down. This is a very difficult district to work in if you're in the people accounting office, because we, we don't, we have so many non-traditional students and portions of FTE. So, when Mashawn says, we have 283 students or 297 students in homeschool partnership, that is not FTE, right? That is lies, and the FTE number is different because one student may only be taking two classes, so we get .2 or .4, whatever the case may be. So, it's adding up all those hanging chads, if you will, to see what the total is. Couple of things, obviously, that are positive trends for us, is that our schools of choice numbers have been trending more positively, meaning we're gaining more students than we're losing, to the tune this year, potentially of about 100 students swing. That's pretty good. In addition to what you saw this evening, the number of virtual students, the number of homeschool partnership students is really growing quicker than we had anticipated. What is important to remember is the bottom row, which says the actual loss of students due to the graduating exit and the projected incoming kindergarten enrollment. We still have a difference of 115 kids of our current kindergartners and our graduating seniors. We just have enough non-traditional revenue in this one year to break even.
So, that's why I mentioned it's flattening. So, that's why it's flattening, because of that number there.
So, the last, yeah, the last six or seven years, our incoming kindergarten class has been right around 300, and we're graduating, let's just say, 450 on an annual basis. What's happening in between kindergarten and the senior year is we're attracting so many, what we would call, non-traditional students. So, this is a good thing, right? It's a, it's a very good thing, because when you watch it, you're down 170, and you're, you know, for the bad, and you're 39, almost 40 for the good, but it's one year, right? It's, it's not time to, you know, start striking up a band and saying, oh, the decline is over, and let's start, you know, calling a halt to all the planning we've done in the last number of years, because it's one year. And so, we want to see if the trend continues and what that, what that will look like. But we will continue to lose students overall, from a head count perspective, we may just be achieving more FTE because the non-traditional numbers are, are adding up. But we're still going to see it there for the next seven, eight years, of about 115 to 120 between the graduating seniors and the kindergarten. So, this is, what happened is exactly what we wanted to have happen. We said, because think about this, guys, if we didn't do this, we would be losing 200, 250, 270 FTE every single year.
You're like clockwork, right? So, this slide, next.
I think it's not just numbers, too. It's like Mashawn said, building community.
Relationships, absolutely, absolutely.
I think there's a non-quantitative piece that's just.
A very, you know.
So, just more wrapped financially, the trend, bottom to the top, other than the 15, which was basically staying neutral, we've been slowly getting healthier. You can see the state average, it's been getting healthier at a faster pace. There's lots of reasons why that is, district by district, but we're much more approaching our 10% goal. And the whole reason is, one, eventually we want to get rid of our $6 million cash flow borrowing, which costs about $100,000 a year in interest expense. Two, it allows for the blips, be it positive or negative, that fund balance is really our elasticity. If something happens abnormal, then we've got some room and we don't have to panic. You have two or three years to adjust versus having to react to one year and make an adjustment. So, that's all good news. You've seen Matt, the audit.
And this is, you know, it can't go without saying, to be, to be in a declining enrollment status, but maintain five, six consecutive years now of adding to the fund equity is, is a significant sign of positive financial health. We've also talked, discussed that even if the community supports the bond in November, we still have till 2022, 23, before we actually would realize any operational savings from closing some of those buildings. So, as we've talked, we've got aging roofs, aging boilers, parking lots that need to resurface. We don't want the reaction to the fact that we had a good year of enrollment to be, all right, now all this money, we need to grow that fund equity, we need to make sure that we stem the tide prior to the bond, polls, or reconfiguration actually going into, actually coming to fruition, that we got, we got three-year gap to cover in case we need a boiler or roof that has a failure. That money's going to come in real handy.
Just back to the quick numbers. So, one of our good news to the school aid fund is that top bullet, we keep statewide losing students. That actually is a good thing for the school aid fund, because the same amount of money of the small growth, 1, 2, 2.3%, you see in the next bullet, helps that money go further. It's one of the reasons why, again, this year, we got 240, because the state had held back a couple of years, built up the balance sheet in the school aid fund, and because we continue to lose in the 10,000, this is the largest in the last five years, 13,000 statewide, as that number has moved from 1.6 to 1.5, now we're approaching 1.4 million students statewide. It helps the school aid fund and our per pupil funding increase from year to year. There is, though, some hesitation, because out of the three economists who presented in January, state revenue consensus meeting, one of them is predicting, and we've, I've stated before, that all the major economists, Michigan, Michigan State, and large banks, by 2025, we're going to have another mid-recession. One of the economists this time said, no, it's going to happen in the next couple of years. That scares all of us, because our whole funding model for the school aid fund is predicated on a financial model of healthy financial times. It sucks, 60% of that school aid revenue comes from sales tax. When the economy stops, so does purchasing, and so does sales tax revenue. So, there is concern to that bullet. Auto, there's concern on the auto, because we are still in this state, highly dependent on that automotive stream of revenue, and, you know, I've watched for these little things. So, what did Ford Motor Company do here in the last six months? Ford Motor Company eliminated the Fusion and the Fiesta and a number of their platforms. Why'd they do that? They're putting all their resources into autonomous vehicles. They're taking a heck of a gamble. They must know something better than me, because maybe around the country, they're going to go autonomous, but Tesla and the others haven't had a good track record of autonomous vehicles lately. But if that fails, that's not good for us. If it succeeds, it'll help stem. We were at, back in 2000, 20 years ago, almost 70% of the worldwide automotive sales, big three. We are down below 40%, fast approaching 50%. So, we've lost our market share, but we've been able to maintain a relatively healthy input to our economy in the state, but it keeps shrinking from the world competition of the automakers. And product mix, what's everything wanted. Both of us who are older, we're back to SUVs again. Almost all the platforms and all manufacturers are SUVs. The next oil prices, we're going to see the same ship we saw in the 80s and go back to little engine cars there, right? So, it's cyclical, we know it's going to be cyclical, it's, we're trying to predict when they're going to hit that bottom of the valley.
GM's going in the electric car, though.
They're putting a lot of R&amp;D money in there.
Yeah.
Looking at what, just continuing the Atala, the Malibu.
Now, they get all the mid-sized.
It's a system.
Right, they're all getting the kind of the mid-sized vehicles, cars, to go into.
Gas prices being at $2 a gallon, helps drive the SUV truck market up.
I think the autonomous is, I get the idea, but I don't think that the full autonomous car is where it's going to end up. I think that we're seeing the features in our cars move forward, so I think that's why they're investing, is they want to implement that.
The problem for us is, we get just bits and pieces and crumbs, and we don't have the full picture. So, I'm not trying to say I really understand and see, but we're looking for these indicators because we know how it impacts the school revenue and the general fund, and that's what all our concern is. The more the general fund of state takes a hit, the more the school aid funds, more will.
Because it affects the supply.
Well, GM had $8.1 billion, so that is positive, and $2.82.
Right, the, the last bullet there on the general fund pressure, so road, road repairs are still out there. It's in the billions, right? I don't think we've even, we've stopped quantifying the state, what it's going to take to fix our roads and our bridges. But we know there's going to be money that's earmarked to that. There's also structurally things that the legislature already did, that causes them to have to put money aside for certain projects already. And that's going to cause in 2021, not 1920, but 2021, 2122, both general fund and school aid fund, a lot of pressure. The retirement system is the big one. We stay, financial people and financial managers stand on the state on this, because they have a model to make that hold by 2035. So, this thing is growing, cost, coming out of the school aid, we're approaching 300 million right off the top every year, that's in our unfunded liability number that we get in revenue, and five days later, we get paid right back to the state, and it's the accounting methodology they had to use to do that. But that is growing, as well as our rate as an employer. So, not too long ago, about a decade ago, that employer rate was in the high teens, and today it's at 33%. So, there's a lot of concern there, because that's a lot of money to us and our budget. And then last bullet, the revenue confidence, is always, the main one, has always been important. I think it's going to be more important this year than it's been in the last eight years, because I think we're going to see a lot of political maneuvering statewide, like we're seeing federally, with a new Governor, a new House leader, a new Senate leader, we're going to see a lot of different approaches. We're still hopeful to be positive, but there's going to be a lot of changes. So, next week, definitely look into the Governor's state and state for some hints where her priorities are at, and then hopefully, in my March timeline there, because March is fast approaching, even though we're on, you know, February 6th, is the Senate House, because until we can get all three branches and see where they're at, we really don't know. We're getting 0, 110, $200 in an increase in the foundation loans or any of our categoricals. Rest of this, pre-syllabus, plenty of courage, just again, kind of a cut from the chart earlier in the presentation of what we do by month leading up to the board adoption in June of the final budget for the 1920 year. Rest, please. Thank you. All right, next, superintendent evaluation process.
This is easily. Yep, I'm pulling it up right now.
And evaluation, everybody's being attacked. So, while Matt's pulling this up, just a few comments. A few years now, evaluation processes for teachers, for administrators, any administrator or teacher, anyone really associated with any instructional program, lots of legislative mandates. And that's last year, we started doing this kind of in a public setting, so that people were aware of the process for massive evaluation. But I think it's important as we start out that everything really aligns with those legislative mandates, from Matt's, from our building administrators, to our teachers, and I'll talk about some of those things. There's a lot of consistency through that. In the pier, long before the legislative mandates came out, we had a fundamental belief that evaluation was about more than just determining who should stay and who should go. We believe that this process is, is really about professional growth. And interesting how the presentations fit together, as I was listening to how they were talking about in the alternative ed, when we identify students who need more help, we put in more supports. We really look at our. We really look at our evaluation system very much that same way with our staff. So we, we each year take a look at identifying using for multiple measures, student growth, which you'll see a little bit in, past performance, and identify who are our staff members that need the most support, and then how can we provide that support to them to help them grow. Everybody's got a basic level of requirement that we need to provide, but that's really what we believe in this process. There's a lot of good things, there's, there's some things that are not so much fun, but at the end of the day, we invest a lot of time in it, and when we see it across the board, it is a good process. So I'm gonna go through this part pretty quickly. Everything that we do does comply with legislation. We also have, there are policies that pertain to the evaluation of superintendents, school administrators, professional staff. All of those things are required by law to be posted on your transparency report, and so if anyone wants to see the actual tool that Matt's being evaluated on, or the process of details, everything's here for all of those. You can get it from our district website very easily. Again, as, as reference, a year ago, we switched tools and went to the M.A.S.B. superintendent evaluation. We had a training here that we participated in. As of this meeting, our two board members have yet to participate in that training, although prior to the end of their first year, they will, and I think they are gonna set up here in the next couple of months to get some training on that tool as well, so that's, that's coming soon. And at that time, we really kind of revised our timeline and changed our timeline for our evaluation system a little bit. So the process really kicks off in April. In April is when we take a look at goals, we agree on the process, what is it that we're gonna use. Updates and progress are provided along the way, I'll give a little more detail about this. Informal and formal updates, August, October, and November. Matt actually keeps a share folder that's accessible to all board members, and throughout the year, as things are happening, because it's the life of a school, things get added to that share folder and align to each one of those particular areas. That really brings us to February, and that's where we are tonight, where we're reviewing the process to everybody. When I'm done with this portion, Matt's gonna be sharing some things with you, kind of circling back to that SharePoint, and where you're gonna be able to access, and I already do all of that evidence. Information is also in there about student growth and progress towards district goals, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The actual evaluation is conducted at our next board meeting. We will go into closed session, complete the consensus process, a little bit more about that later, and then come back into open session and finalize the evaluation.
You mean our next regular part?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one in February.
Good job there.
Yes. We're gonna have a lot on it like that. This part, and again, this is very similar to what you see for building administrators and teachers. What is new this year, student growth by law now must be 40% of the overall evaluation. And we'll talk a little bit more about student growth in a minute because there's other, some other pieces that are, that are new. A year ago, the legislative mandate was 25%, so this is a jump up. There is a lot of activity on the legislative front that looks like this may change again. For now, the law that's unbooked is 40%. We will complete the evaluation at 40%. Of that, 50% is really where a lot of the time goes because those are the professional practice ratings. Matt mentioned earlier, those are actually, I think it was the committee report, there are five different areas that kind of comprise that 50%. All of those different factors, each one of those has a series of standards below them. I wanna talk about 40% for student growth for just a minute. This is true, that 40%, teachers, administrators, and superintendent, any administrator responsible for instructional programs, that part's similar this year, from 25 to 40. What, in addition to the increase in the percentage, this is the first year that the state has truly provided us with access to a tool, sounds a little weird, that gives us the ability to calculate what they mandated for a while. So for a while, we have been required to use state assessment scores, three years worth of state assessment scores tied directly back to teachers, and then to buildings, and then to the district. This is the first year, however, that they have actually provided us with the tool to be able to get that piece of data. So even though it was in the law for the last three years, we were not really able to fully comply because we didn't have access to a tool or the information provided.
It makes perfect sense.
This year we do. Now, in the, in the coming weeks, our teachers and our building administrators are gonna start to kind of take a peek because everybody's a little bit nervous, what does this mean? It's, what I'm really speaking to is the 20% state assessment score. It is a, it's a, it's a complex score, I'm not gonna go into a lot of great detail, but it is truly a growth score. It is not a score based on proficiency. It looks at student performance on a prior state assessment. It ranks those students in the high performing, medium, or low performing, and it looks at how the students tied to that teacher did a year later against kids in that same group. So if it, if it's a look, if they were, their student was in a low performing group the year before, and in the next assessment, they may still be in the low performing group, but they're the highest, that generates a higher student growth score. So it is, it is not tied to proficiency, it's about how much growth do they make relative to their peers who are performing about the same way. It's complex, it's appropriately complex, because when we're supposed to be measuring growth, that's what we're looking for. And so those scores are rolling out, Matt's evaluation will truly be the first one to use it. What happens is individual teachers have growth scores, those are rolled up into building growth scores, so building principals really have, have kind of all of the teachers in their building, the students in their building. At the district level is all the students within the district. So those reports are coming out.
I want you all to, to really take in the fact that you have a master presenting to us, and she made that sound like that all makes sense. Never mind, we might have changed the test that it's based on from the prior year, but forget that. She should be doing this for the state.
Yeah. So, just to talk for a moment about the professional practice rating side, this is, those are the five different areas, just so that you can kind of have a flavor of, of what those look like. Each one of those individual areas is broken down into subcomponents, and those subcomponents is what we talk about, and, and Matt eventually will be scored upon on a rubric just like our teachers are, just like our building administrators are, right? What's an ineffective, minimally effective, highly effective, or effective rating in each one of those particular categories. So as a reminder, we will go into closed session next time. The board president, along with myself, will, kinda, I'll keep the eye on the process to make sure we're following the process along, but we'll facilitate that discussion on those professional practice ratings. So there'll be a conversation about each one of those. You will have all of this information in advance. Really, you have, tonight's presentation is so that you know, you've got the full next month really to kind of dig into that information. A lot of the hard copy things will be sent to you, and I think we'll have to talk a little about that in a minute. In closed session, the student growth score has really been determined, so that, that's the only piece, it's a, it's a pure calculation, so it's, it's not an arbitrary number that will be calculated, so that one will be assessed, we'll talk about that as well. And then finally, a score will be assessed on the district-wide goals. So that will, that conversation will take place in closed session. That's what those rubrics look like, so we'll kind of go through each one of those. This is governance and board relation, and, and there's gonna be a rating assigned on each one. So that takes place in closed session. We come back out in open session, whether we like it or not, what the process states is that each one of those will be, be read, so that does take a little while, so some time involved. So we come back in open session, those performance indicators are read, the score rating for student growth and progress towards district goals, that overall rating is read as well. So that information is reviewed in open session, and then the vote will be taken to complete the year-end evaluation for the superintendent. That's the process in a nutshell, so I think really from there, Matt's gonna talk a little bit more detail about the things that you're gonna be getting, as well as how you can access that evidence.
Thanks, Kim. So this is my final update, I give four each year, two informal and two formal. The formal, it's required that it's a public presentation for the board, so this, we know it as a requirement. Just based on what Kim just shared with you, I provide evidence of the entire course of the year, and I'm gonna walk you through some of that evidence tonight, certainly not all of it, but those are, those are the categories that we work in. The evidence is all collected on SharePoint as Kim identified, and here's what the page looks like when you get to it. It has each of the domain areas, as well as progress towards our, our district goals, student growth evidence. There's a folder for school board member questions, so anytime you want to have me provide evidence for a particular domain area or a question in general, you can go on here anytime and, and add that, or you can call Mr. Keller and say, you know, Mike, I, I have a question about Matt's evaluation in community relations, domain B. I want some evidence about this concern I have, or I want more evidence. Mike shares that with me, so you don't even have to go into SharePoint to do it, and he and I talk about it quite frequently. All the updates are here for your review, informal update one, informal update two, formal update one, formal update one and two, and then I also provide the annual timeline there as well. So all I wanted to do this evening, from an update perspective, is just show you the types of evidence that you, as Kim alluded to, you have a month to review. In the first category, which is governance and board relations evidence, and this is a domain, when you're talking about governance and board relations, it talks about, if you recall the training, this is not about, just like we do with our principals and teachers, this is not inventing things to do, this is just collecting stuff that we already do, putting it in a place where we all can review it, so we're not duplicating. The whole point of evaluation is not to create a completely separate process that's separate from your job duties every day. So a lot of this, you've already seen, there are PowerPoint presentations that I give into the board, they are reports that we provide as part of the audit, they are communications that we had via email, they're weekend, these things, a lot of this we've already seen, but when you see it in this place, and I, and I rate myself as a two, three, or one, two, three, or four, and I have evidence that corresponds with it, you can say, okay, I think Matt's a four in this area, or maybe it needs to develop and there's a three, or it's pretty basic, I don't see it really well developed, maybe he's a two or a one. You gotta have evidence to, to be able to support it, and if there's not enough there for you throughout the course of the year, that's why this is kind of an ongoing thing, right? We don't wait until the end of the year to tell an administrator or a teacher in April, and we've had all these concerns all year with you, and your final evaluation is ineffective and surprise. Right? Not, not, not an effective way to manage anything. So throughout the course of the year, you as a board member, evaluation isn't a one-time thing. It is literally begins in April, and at any time, you can go into this, evaluate the evidence, ask for more, question it. That way, by the time we get to this point in February and March, we should all pretty much know how this process should play out, which is the exact same thing we want for our teachers and administrators. Evaluation is about growth, as Kim said, not about gotcha. So inside here, you'll see things like WeekEnders, focus panel feedback, evaluation and strategic plan PowerPoint. I throw in some emails that I've gotten from people that have this, and there's all kinds of things in here, I think. So for example, we had focus panel feedback. So you click on that, up comes a document from our focus groups, you know, advantages and disadvantages of our strategic plan, you've seen this already, overall thoughts, but the whole point being, I shared the good, the bad, mainly with you as board members, you should have access to all of these things. That is just one piece of evidence you find in governance and board relations. So I go back to the main page, click on domain two, what's my evidence of community relations? Inside that domain, there are a variety of things. It's things like, you know, my presence at district events, am I involved in any outside organizations? What's our media relations like? What's our communication? So we looked at things like, the county press did an article on our strategic plan. So I went in here, went online, got the article, and linked it, many of you saw it, LCS proposes a right size in the plan, written by a very, very talented individual whose wise beyond his years, really, this is Pulitzer Prize-type stuff here. Oh, hey, Nick. Good stuff, right? And so, what I just shared with you, this is part of community relations, what, how do we communicate with local media? What is their opinion of some of the things that we produce? And so I provide that as evidence in this particular domain area. Let's not let me close, go back. What about staff relations? So we have professional development sessions, and we, we survey our staff almost immediately. So don't take it from me, you know, I'm not gonna come in here and say, hey, the elementary staff professional development session in August was the greatest thing that ever been a part of. I just cut and paste the elementary staff survey that we, that we issue, and you can read every response, good, bad, and ugly. Same thing is true of the secondary staff survey. I share staff emails that I receive, emails that I generate out to the staff, just so you can get a flavor of how do I communicate with our teachers and our administrators, and what is their reaction to me? And there's good, there's bad, and there's everything in between here. It's not an attempt to Sherco you and say, every single teaching in the district thinks every decision we make is great, the ones that are present do echo that saying, but there are some folks that ask some questions. So we, I just, that's the kind of flavor that you'll get in there. So you click on these things, here's the staff survey, right? And literally, it's 50 pages of what was the question, what percentage of staff answered, agreed, disagreed, whatever, and you can scroll in here and go through, you know, all 50 pages and all 30 questions or whatever. So that's right there for you to view as part of my evaluation. Business and finance, there are things in here like the auto report. Tonight's presentation is part of that, right? We build these presentations as a team. I'm the leader of the team, this is a direct, you know, what Mark shared with you today is a direct result of, of our leadership team's collaboration, that's evidence of my leadership as it relates to budget finance. You'll see PowerPoints, you'll see the auto report, you'll see things about our budget development process, you'll see things in the Weekender, things like that. Instructional leadership, same thing. You know, there are 10 different domain areas in here, as you recall from our training, they don't tell you to provide evidence in every single domain area, there can be a little bit overwhelming to look at all these things, so I just select a majority of them to provide evidence on, but there are some I do not. You know, here's a great example, our Root Goldberg thing that we do for PLTW, and we, oh, it's not gonna let me click on that link, but there's a link to that, it shows you an article that was done, student feedback on our strategic plan, things like that. So again, that's the evidence you'll see in that area. Then we have our progress towards district goals and student growth evidence. The student growth evidence, as Kim indicated, is a calculation that is already done based on the form we've created for all professional instructional staff. That's the only thing, you don't have any input on because it is just a function of the numbers and our students' output, but it's the same, exact same score, literally every building's score is averaged out and equates to my success or failure in, in progress towards our student growth goals. Progress towards district goals, I basically link the district goals to my evaluation. So I'm not, I don't create different goals that our administrators aren't responsible for achieving, that our teachers aren't responsible for achieving, and we actually look at, here's a presentation that we did in August about our goals, and about how we're reaching them. And, you know, Michelle gave this presentation, here's all of our data, ELA state testing, MAT state testing, where do we fall? What are the highlights, what are the lowlights? Where's our growth areas? Where are things that we need to, you know, focus on for improvement? All of that is part of my evaluation, much of this you've already seen, but this is the opportunity to review it in more detail. Okay, so you get a flavor for what you're going to see and can see all year, and the point is, is that it's an ongoing process. So what am I gonna send to you before the week's end? Directions again for how to access SharePoint, because there's like seven or eight steps to get there, but most of you have been doing this all year. You're gonna get a scored self-evaluation, so the actual rubric. You're going to get a scored self-evaluation, so the actual rubric that you're going to be filling out as a group in closed session, I conduct a self-evaluation, both with a numeric indicator of how I think I've done in that particular domain, and some narrative at the bottom of it to explain why. You can then go into that, go into A, governance and board relations, you see my scores, you see my narrative, and then you can go in, and SharePoint can see, does Matt's evidence correlate to the score he gave himself? You're going to get a blank evaluation rubric, so you may need to take some notes, because when you come to the board meeting, you don't fill out your individual score and hand it in, it's not an average, we discuss it as a group when we come to a score as a collective, but you might want to take some notes, like, okay, I see Matt scored himself a three here, but I think he's a two, and here's why I think that, and I want to say that when I get there. Or, Matt scored himself as a two, I think he's a three, and I want to tell the group why I think that. So, you have that blank copy to make some evaluation notes, and you'll also get a copy of my contract, as we discussed, that is a very closed session, and ask that you make a decision on that in connection to my evaluation when we come back into open session. So, you have, I said it, so the email will be by February 8th, you'll have all that information, and a full month to review it, take notes, ask questions of Mr. Keller and Kim, who managed the process, I do not manage the process, the only thing I do in this is give you my self-evaluation. Kim and Mike run the show, and then, I really appreciate this process, Kim and I were talking about this, as opposed to how we used to do it, you know, where at the end of the year you kind of think, oh, what have I done this year? You try and pull evidence, the fact that I've got to give four updates throughout the year, by the time I get to this point, and going back and looking at my areas of weakness and things, the areas I'm strong in, I'm focusing on it all year, I'm really growing as a result of it. So, I just personally prefer this, even though it's a lot more time-consuming, it's a lot more work to upload all this evidence, to give all these updates, but just professionally speaking, I really appreciate the process, it really has been meaningful for me personally and professionally. So, it's a good process, time-consuming, but I think.
I think what's important to say too is we're not with you every day, like, most bosses are with their employees, so all the evidence, I think, helps us to determine, and that has to be provided by you, I mean, that's probably the way we can see, you know, so I do agree with the process, it's very, I know for me, if I ever go to self-evaluation, I'd be a lot harder for myself than my boss would be, so.
It's funny you say that, because I remember a discussion from last year, like, I was giving myself lots of twos and threes, and we're, and they're, but, you know, and Kim shares my vision on this, we have talked about this in my eight years here, what is evaluation about? Evaluation is not about trying to convince your boss or losses that you're as good as you're employed, it's really about you looking inward and saying, I'm not perfect at everything, nobody is, I don't live in highly effective, I can't, no human can. I live mainly effective, in some areas, I'm really good, in some areas, I'm a one or a two, and I got to get better at, right? So, if you're not seeing the evidence to support my personal rating, that's where you as board members come in and say, either A, Matt, you're too hard on yourself, I think you're better in this area, or we agreed, you got to get better in this particular domain area. So, that really is where it's at.
One of the things we teach, I have to show you something I have to get better at, it's sometimes not possible to get much better than status quo in certain areas, let's face it, you were made to be strong in certain areas, and that's, we teach this in our business division, that strength is where it lies, and there's, you know, certain, and that's where you partner and hire good people below you to help with that process. So, I think that's the other side of it, that, you know, you're right, you're not going to be highly effective, you're not meant to be highly effective, that's how we're made. So, I think it's important to recognize, if you have those, then you partner with good people, and those are like helpful.
We'll keep it in mind too, because we have, Brad, you've been through this before, in summer, certainly you've been through many of the waiting processes over the years, but this is one where we have to do our homework. I, speaking for myself, I don't want to sit in that room and then try to find evidence of different things, we need to have all that done before we get there. If you've got questions, ask them, that's not the time we're going to do that, we have a lot on our plate in that margin meeting, we have, so do your homework, read everything, if you have questions, get them out to either Kim or Mike, do it in advance, and so we can be as efficient in the end, so.
And adding to that, the one that we did in 16 and before, it was, hey, here you go, good luck, I'll evaluate him with what you know, where, you know, especially for someone, this is your first time going through it, and me coming back down, we now have something that we can actually see, and, because, you know, we're judging you on, you know, two months and a week worth of information, we're not doing you any justice, or the people that elected us to evaluate you any justice either. So, I do look, I mean, this is a lot more labor-intensive, but it's way, way better than the one, like you said, that we used, where it was just, write down a few comments, see your, get a report, you had that, so.
But we're not allowed to say, I don't know, is the answer to one of these questions, so, we need to know. Thanks, Matt. All right, next on our agenda is action items, and in our action item category tonight is consent grouping, item number one, approval of minutes of January 9th, 2019 regular meeting, and number two, an overnight trip request for the role of the Orange Summer Student Council of Maple City, Michigan on May 20th through the 23rd, anybody like anything pulled from the consent group?
I just have one question, the overnight trips, are we, it's like going to become customary to have them come present, if they, if it is an overnight trip? Are we going to make this standing that, you know, if you're leaving for a day, do you have to come?
Not, we typically have not done that.
We have not done that, but we want to do more reporting, I think we've had support member concerns, and I happen to agree with them, that you're being asked to approve a trip that you don't necessarily have a whole lot of firsthand knowledge of, what are the benefits, what are the students getting out of it, if it is missing a significant number of days of school, what is the benefit academically, so I kind of agree with that assessment.
I like it, I'm glad we're doing it.
But it will not be, it won't be a requirement, yeah, but we need to do more of those presentations.
Yeah, I've been here for two years, and we've approved out these, these field trips, and not one of them has come back and shared their experience with us. And some have been on the weekends, but some have been one night, but some have been more than one day, and it's like, do what you, just because it's always been done, I'm not a person just because it's always been done that we keep doing it this way, we love to learn from the kids, and that's my position.
I like it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going back to my question, anybody want any of these items pulled? If not, I maintain a motion.
I move that the reading of minutes will be made, we've done the items we approved as presented.
Very good. Would you have a vote, Mrs. DeBai?
Yes.
Mrs. Noack?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Mr. Romans of I, in the name of the parents. All right, so next up, board member communications and topics, who'd like to go first? All right, Ms. Gregor.
Last night, I know I missed Denise by about 25 minutes at Woodchips for the fundraiser for Project Graduation, and speaking of fundraisers, this Friday night is a fundraiser for a former LePierre East graduate, Nicole Roberts, who might remember her brothers were fantastic football players, late 90s, early 2000s, she is raising money to go and compete, you know, on Team USA, the United Arab Emirates, it's at the Center Building from 5 to 7. There's no cover charge, it's just, you know, everybody there is going towards helping, helping to represent the United States, so.
Anything else? All right, thank you, anyone else?
I guess I just wanted to thank all the staff at CFI and all the different wheels you guys going on over there, and it's exciting to hear what all you guys are passionate about that, and just, I did attend the meeting that Matt went to for the LePierre Tea Party, it was very good, I think you answered a lot of questions about the strategic plan at that, I think they were ready, the crowd was, they were very respectful, and you answered all the questions that they had throughout your presentation, and the pictures we talked about at our meeting, I think visuals, people carry, you know, I think that'll help the process with it, so, other than that, just, that's all I have.
And I appreciate it, Jan and Brad being with me, those very nice and decent friendly faces, thank you for your support.
They're great, Brad.
Good progress. I wish you'd be good.
I had a great conversation with parents the other day, after your challenge of getting 20 people on it, but it's just, I ran to somebody that I haven't seen in probably four years at least, and that more, went to school here with my kids, and she now teaches an expert for their alternative, and, kind of, boy, she still has one student here, oh, that's 14, so, the other ones are all grown, and so we got to talk about all kinds of stuff, and then we started talking about the strategic plan, and she's very, very much in favor of it, and so it was a really great conversation, and to hear and her take, and she was asking some questions, but, yeah, it was good.
All she has to do is get $4,000, and her friends to, yes, for her, for her to think of hats.
So, it was great to see the way I hadn't seen a while, and then get to talk to you about what she's thinking, even though, you know, because most of hers are grown, the boys are all grown, and so it was good to see that. And she probably has her Valentine dance this Friday, it's weird, so it's nothing happened.
Well, to that note, I just want to thank you, Matt, for stepping up to the challenge, the whole, it was beautiful, you did a great job, and I tell you how many people really love that, I mean, that challenge, I mean, all seriousness, we don't like to miss school, but in the light of things that are out of control, it was great, I mean, kids were talking about it, parents were sharing what talent we have and the difference, so.
Yeah, I just want.
Did you see Matt Olson?
It's never going to happen again.
He was out the show.
I can't imagine the pressure, so I do say, I know he was pressured by some of us, and so, yes, we have to step up, I think it's cool how Jared put in our email that it gained 150,000 views, and got us to 10,000 subscribers, so, you talk about race, you talk about relation, your face out there really helps us to gain those relationships with our community.
But we're at 11,000.
Oh, okay. Okay, now, it says increase, so, crisis, so, Jared, I have to.
Do you know this word's great, superintendent?
Yes, oh yeah, Matt Olson did one.
He did a good job, too.
There was.
Great, there was some really good ones, I have to say.
And I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to CFI as well, you know, the homeschool partnership, I live down the road from Crankton, so it's kind of cool to see the, the activity going on, and so that's just really exciting, I like how it's looked at, this is an opportunity for our students and our community, but you guys at CFI, amazing, like I said, I've just been there, it's kind of awesome, thank you.
Anybody else? I too want to echo thoughts, I think Lisa picked up on your point, the opportunities that you guys have created, things that you expose our kids to with actions you've given are fantastic. Troy's been involved with Community High School for a long time, and that's, me, you know, being one of the older ones on this board, still is one of us programs, because they help keep those kids that otherwise would be lost, and it's just a fantastic program, and I really appreciate the fact that you're doing it. I hope your next 12 days, Bridget, are as good as your first. That is the one where, I mean, we do have all of the, again, we didn't have all of the social media stuff when I first got on this board, so we got, must have been blur errors. It was. But what we got though instead was actual, personal, face-to-face feedback, and what we got a lot of was, were people saying, thank you for doing Community High School, and we got a lot of that, because it was a lot, you know, grandmas and grandpas, aunts and uncles saying, love this program, we don't know where we're going to be, and so, I wanted to get applause as part of this whole CFI process, I really appreciate that program, the fact that it's continued so successfully, and I really appreciate, again, all the enthusiasm you guys show, if nothing else, it makes us feel good, because none of you were up there going, oh, great, I did this presentation tonight, and, you know, none of you showed at least your disdain for being here, I appreciate that. What, instead what we got was your passion, and it's evident in everything you do and everything you said, and what I really get a kick out of, and I think Michelle exemplifies this, as do all of the folks on my left side of this room, there is a lot of work that goes into making things look easy, and I don't think anyone appreciates the amount of time and energy and effort you guys all put in to make this stuff work, and, because we all take it for granted, it's just supposed to work, and so, you know, I thank you all for everything that you've done, I think it's just fantastic. I have a different take on the Simi video, as I watch it, because.
Major.
I'm famously not on Facebook, and, but I had lots of people come to me and say, hey, have you seen this? And I was reminded instantly of a scene from Animal House, it was Stairwell with a guitar. I'm just going to share that. That was my reaction. Anyone here? I did. No, it was awesome, and anything that generates a positive buzz is a good thing, and I've heard here recently some politicians, and one guy who's in trouble right now in Anthony say, it's not when they talk about it, it's when they don't talk about it, you know, it's that constant buzz, though, I mean, if we always are in the minds and hearts of folks around us, that's a good place to be, and to generate that kind of buzz over a snow day song, I mean, if that's a latte, keep it up, I mean, those are.
Can you just imagine the guitar?
I have a note, I can do it.
No, I think we should change it to ice day.
Yeah.
How happy we will be going to school, total.
It's a buzz day, you know? No, but it was, it was just a great positive buzz that, I mean, it probably took a long time to put that together, and I would have no appreciation for that, but still, I mean, these little things, just keep it going in a positive direction and keep our district out there, because, you're right, people were sharing that like crazy, that's fantastic. I also wanted to say thank you here for everyone who participated in the pink-out game, we had a lot of pink, I have not done it yet, I am going to personally, if I can't get to Davidson in one of their board meetings, I, at the very least, I'm going to write to them, they showed up in pink, that's awesome, I mean, they showed up in pink when our administrative staff did not, so I'm just going to throw that out there, and next time we do this, because it appears to be something that everyone is interested in continuing, that if we do this again, my expectation is that if our administrative staff shows up, that they actually look like they know what the event is that's going on, because to the man, there were none, just throwing that out there, or wherever it lands, but to a man, there were none that I saw that were, especially the men, the women, women represented, the men did not show up in pink, and I was a little disappointed with that, and I'm sure that they all have some somewhere, and if not, I agree with that.
How much pink were you wearing?
A lot.
Because, don't make me, when you were, my senior year, we wore pink sacks against health, go up to my knees, don't make me pull them out.
No, it was, it was great, though, and it's great to see the community support, we got comments last year that made it all work well, from people who were cancer survivors, that, you know, they were very pleasantly surprised that went to a basketball game and came away with just another great positive feeling about our district, saying that they felt supported by the community, and just in ways that they, I guess, weren't anticipating, so, thank you to everybody who participated in that, and again, a great shout out to Davidson, because they showed up and did it right, I mean, the guys and the girls were in pink, and I did not expect that, that was just a really cool thing to see, so, thank you, everybody. Matt, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and the game couldn't have been capped up any better, like, two great victories over Davidson, which is always a good thing, but, and I don't think people realize this, but Mike's daughter, Bree, was the genesis of that whole concept of pink-out basketball game, and she is a freshman at Hope College, not even a student here anymore, and her legacy carried on by her parents, so, thank you to the Sherpas and the Noles for continuing to do that. Project Graduation, Mary and Jared and I enjoyed a wonderful lunch at Woodchips the other day to support, and we ran into a ton of people from staff and the community, every table was somebody, we were kind of high-fiving.
I asked her last night, when I was leaving, how many, and she said they did a lot of them.
I'm a football square, I'm against the NFL.
We were in there, there was four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12 people in that room that were connected over here in some way, that were supporting, so, I apologize for my texting during the meeting, but as you could probably guess, there's a lot of snow day chatter right now, the superintendent, the road commission folks, our drivers, Linda, Mark, I've been trying to keep tabs on it, we're not going to make a decision this evening, we're going to wait to see what the road commission can get to this evening on our back roads.
Because I like to be woken up really early.
As does Mrs. Wondery, really appreciates the 3:30 call, and I believe it's, well, it's something like.
I waited until 4:00, but.
Well, it was 1:00, I, my call was 1:30, so, it's okay.
Well, it was one, I, my call was one-thirty, so. So, twenty years of experience, but I got it.
Yeah, yeah. My wife only has eight years of experience with us, she's not quite as seasoned as me to get the calls. Typically is followed by something like, get out. So I have to go in the living room and have the conversations that last about an hour.
Are schools canceled any around this?
Uh, they're, some closed yesterday in Oakland County really early, like five or six in the evening. We, my typical process is, you know, we contact, I lead the conversation with all of Lapeer County sues. Mark, Mark Raider, Mark Meiser, Linda have a conversation with the road commission folks, and then I call districts to the south of us, Orient Oxford, Carson, Branson, (inaudible), and then our Elmont suit has a contact in, like, K-Pak and east of us, in the lower east. So we try to get a pretty good view, and then the five of us, the five district sues in the county will make a decision. So we'll, you know, we will text all evening about who's closing, what's going on, what is your, you know, what's the road commission saying about Inlee Roads, North Branch Roads, Dryden Roads, Lapeer Roads. And then we, we, ninety-nine, one-hundred percent of the time, try to be uniform in our decision-making, because it's difficult if tribes decide to stay open and the other four close. Doesn't always work out. Elmont in particular, oftentimes will try to lead more towards what McCombe is doing. A lot of their folks sort of have a close relationship with the Romeo District, what they do, and Armita, and that kind of thing. And, you know, we try to put it out at the same time. So if we're going to close at six minute before, we all agree to that. If we're going to close by five-thirty a.m., we all agree to that. So, the text chatter was, there was some hope that the road commission will be able to get to our side streets. Let's wait till morning, perhaps the condition is normal person. So, that's, and it, from the time the first call comes in the morning to me around figure four, it takes an hour to get everybody on board, make sure we're all on the same page. And then, then we're awake, and we should be (inaudible). So, whatever. The last, the last several weeks have been, have been long days. Strategic planning update, as you know, we're going to have a special meeting February twentieth. In the interim, I've got some major presentations at the Alumni Association luncheon, and the Kiwanis Group at their lunch, so continue to, those dates are available. And continue to discuss the strategic plan. As Jan alluded to, the Tea Party presentation went very well, a lot of great questions, really good turnout, only forty-five people or so, I thought. I got several positive emails and correspondence the following day. We had our consulting team, Vonnick and Vonnick, meet with our K-12 leadership team yesterday to talk about, they conduct some survey and auditing of the community. They share, which you all sort of access all this information as well, some demographic data about elections in both Michigan Y and specific to Lapeer. We began to talk about the transition from development of the plan to the campaign phase, kind of some of the do's and don'ts as an employee, of what you can do and engage in, in a campaign for the bond. The audit results were extremely positive. I will be sharing that document with you, just to give you a precursor. It begins to ask particular people in the community about their perceptions of Lapeer schools, from an academic program perspective, from a communication perspective, from a vision perspective. They, they, every single, our average, they scored on a four-point scale, one being, you know, a fail, four being an A. Our average was in mid-threes, and every, not one score below a two, a two point. So I think two point six or two point seven was our, was our worst score. So every single category, there was probably twenty of them above average. And right now, they estimate with some polling, that our number is around point four-four of support, which they said is extremely high. This early, we have not had a formal campaign launch.
Forty-seven?
Point four-four. So if fifty-one percent gets you to yes, we're point seven points, essentially, behind, and they said, yeah, we've seen campaigns at this point at point three-four, point three-five, and we pulled out. So they feel like it's a really solid jumping off point. When we haven't put out one mailer, we haven't published one ICAQ document, we haven't done any campaigning of any kind, but essentially, almost fifty percent of people on the survey say we think it's a good point. So, we're really good at that. And so we're excited, and we'll hear more about that as we meet on the twentieth. And to the staff, I've already said it, it's been said a number of times, but these programs couldn't happen without you guys. I absolutely love what I'm hearing, continuing to see. Thank you so much for your dedication to our non-traditional students, and the love and the care and the passion that you have for them. It just, it's the reason why it's working, you know, and I know, you can see, CFI sometimes is not as sexy as it might appear. I know a lot of your peers oftentimes kind of wonder what's going on over there, and there's, you know, some, some weird stares and some uncertainty, and they think, you know, there's this kind of other world, and I know that sometimes the characterizations are unfair, and I know you guys deal with that. But to kind of get through that as a non-traditional building, I think it's pretty evident that a lot of our successes in district is connected directly to those efforts. It can't be denied, the numbers don't lie. And so, you know, from the Board of Education and the coal team, and me as superintendent, please keep it up, please keep doing what you're doing, because we wouldn't be sitting where we're at without the people in this room, there's just no doubt on my, so thank you so much.
All right, pretty good. One more motion to make.
Make a motion, (inaudible).
All right, is there support?
(inaudible).
Although, please, Mrs. Pibody?
Yes.
Noack?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Inspector?
Aye.
Each room says aye, motion, or if the meeting is adjourned.
Drive safely, everyone.